Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, April 7th, 2014. I'd ask that you all rise for brief invocation to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, as the city council meets in our regular session, we just ask for guidance and direction as we interact and discuss and approve the various affairs of business on our agenda. We are ever mindful that tonight we have several appointments, including a group of young gentlemen who are going to be appointed to the Batavia Fire Department, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them as they embark upon their work in what is obviously a very challenging but rewarding profession. And tonight also, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving so ably on foreign soils in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them and all those whom our country who are serving so ably with them. Tonight, we just ask for direction and guidance and understanding and vision as we act on the areas of business before us, knowing that each and every member of the city council is here tonight trying to do the best that they can in their own heart and mind to pave a bright and prosperous future for the community of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman, ATAC, would you raise your pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will ask that Kirk to please call the roll.
Brown?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
ATAC?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chansett?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sparks?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Homan?
Here.
Sam?
Here.
Vassiliyan?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all fourteen members of the city council are present and accounted for this evening's meetings, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed in tonight's agenda. Alderman Sparks, do you have this? Or Alderman Stark?
I have none, Your Honor.
Well, we... Let me ask one question, because I'm looking in the audience and I'm... Do we have the Johnson family here? Okay. All right. I wanted to make sure we had everybody here, because that was one thing we definitely wanted to do, and I didn't want to do it if you weren't here. So that was... Okay, very good. We have nothing then to act upon then as far as the agenda goes. Okay, moving then to item number five, which is presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman Sparks or Stark, would you give this, please?
The consent agenda consists of the following items. I move that we accept and place on file the joint committee of the whole minutes for January 21st, February 11th, February 18th, February 24th, February 25th, March 11th, and March 18th, 2014. The historic preservation commission minutes for March 10th, 2014. The plan commission minutes for February 19th and March 19th, 2014. The February financials. The March 28th, 2014 payroll in the amount of $721,337.68. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $668,216.79. The city council minutes for March 3rd, 2014. Resolution 14-32-R, accept trustee's deed for parcel one in Normandy subdivision at South Redant Road and Edwards Drive that came before J.COW on 3/18/14 with a vote of seven to two with five absent. Resolution 14-37-R, authorize change order number one, WWTP improvements Contract with Manusso's General Contracting, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $14,522 that came before the J.COW on 3/18/14, vote ten to zero for absent. Resolution 1444-R, requesting a permit from IDOT for the closure of various roadways for 2014 special events that came before the J.COW on 4/1/14, vote of nine zero with five absent. Resolution 1445-R, authorizing execution of contract for Houston Street water main replacement that came before the J.COW on 4/1/14, vote of nine zero with five absent. Approval Class F liquor licenses for Batavia Artists Association at Water Street Studios on April 11th, 2014, and July 11th, 2014, and to waive fee that came from Chief Shire on 4/1/14, and an approval of a Class F liquor license for Batavia Main Street for cocktails in the park on May 17th, 2014, and to waive the fee, again, that came from Chief Shire on 4/1/14. I move that we accept and place on file as read.
Second.
By Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Sparks, for the approval of the consent agenda presented. Any discussion? Could call the roll?
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Fourteen yes, no, noes, none absent. Okay, moving then to item number six, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody that wishes to address the council tonight on something not on the agenda? Okay, moving then to item number seven, which is a presentation by the Batavia Chamber of Commerce. Do we have somebody here from the Chamber of Commerce? Just will pass on that one. Moving to item number eight, before I present this, I would just want... I sent out a memo last Wednesday or Thursday to everybody on the city council about this. Did everybody get this? Okay. I had somebody ask me prior to the meeting that they didn't get the memo, so I think the memo is pretty self-explanatory. What has happened is, is that Joe Burke, who has very honorably served as the... He most recently served as chairman of the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners for the city of Batavia, has asked not to be considered for another reappointment. He has experienced some health issues and is dealing with those, and so I was very, very sorry to see Joe go, and I know the members of the Police and Fire Department Administration share that viewpoint with me. And so we're gonna, as we did with other appointments recently, we are gonna have him down here soon and present him with a plaque similar to what we did with Wyatt George, because I believe Joe has served for twenty-five years on the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, and I credit some of what I feel is the high caliber of personnel we've been able to hire recently with some of his viewpoints and input and understanding into the process. So I'm very sorry to see he leave this group, but that's his decision. So we have an opening, and his appointment is up here May 1st, so I would like to submit to the city council the name of Lauren Newman, 345 North Batavia Avenue, to be the new member of the Batavia Board of Fire and Police Commissioners to replace Mr. Burke for a term of three years.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded for the approval of the appointment of Lauren Newman. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Fourteen yes, no, noes, none absent. Okay, moving then to item number six, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody that wishes to address the council tonight on something not on the agenda? Okay, moving then to item number seven, which is a presentation by the Batavia Chamber of Commerce. Do we have somebody here from the Chamber of Commerce? Just will pass on that one. Moving to item number eight, before I present this, I would just want... I sent out a memo last Wednesday or Thursday to everybody on the city council about this. Did everybody get this? Okay. I had somebody ask me prior to the meeting that they didn't get the memo, so I think the memo is pretty self-explanatory. What has happened is, is that Joe Burke, who has very honorably served as the... He most recently served as chairman of the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners for the city of Batavia, has asked not to be considered for another reappointment. He has experienced some health issues and is dealing with those, and so I was very, very sorry to see Joe go, and I know the members of the Police and Fire Department Administration share that viewpoint with me. And so we're gonna, as we did with other appointments recently, we are gonna have him down here soon and present him with a plaque similar to what we did with Wyatt George, because I believe Joe has served for twenty-five years on the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, and I credit some of what I feel is the high caliber of personnel we've been able to hire recently with some of his viewpoints and input and understanding into the process. So I'm very sorry to see he leave this group, but that's his decision. So we have an opening, and his appointment is up here May 1st, so I would like to submit to the city council the name of Lauren Newman, 345 North Batavia Avenue, to be the new member of the Batavia Board of Fire and Police Commissioners to replace Mr. Burke for a term of three years.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded for the approval of the appointment of Lauren Newman. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no, noes, none absent. Thank you very much. Okay, moving to item number nine, we have a check presentation tonight by the Batavia Police Department. I had asked Chief Shire if he'd come up, and Kathy Drumel from the Post-Prom Committee of the Batavia School District is here, and I'd like to ask her if she would come up, and...
I brought with me Amy Nelson. She's one of our co-chairs of the Post-Prom Committee. There are three of us.
All right, let's let the chief make his little spiel here first.
Would you want to lead the foundation, Mayor?
Okay, the foundation of this is, the city of Batavia, a number of years ago, because hopefully I have been somewhat of a hard-to-get-along-with liquor control commissioner, and if you break the rules, we bang you pretty good. We generally fine, and there's a money is put... Any fines that are leveled by myself as the liquor control commissioner, the money goes into a special account, it's not part of the general fund, and the money is then turned around and used for events and activities in the community, which espouse drug and alcohol education and trying to encourage people to do something that does not involve alcohol. And so we feel that the post-prom party that is hosted for Batavia High School students following the prom each year is probably a great example of this, and so we are gonna make a donation to that tonight using some of the proceeds from the most recent fines. The Batavia Police Department last year did a compliance check on all thirty-three of our liquor license holders in the city of Batavia to make sure that they were properly checking IDs and whatever, and unfortunately, we had, I believe, thirteen failed the exam, so to speak. And as a result of that, each one of those had some conversation with me, and each one of those decided, based on my history and what I will do to you if you don't want to adhere to the rules, that they would agree to a fine without a hearing, and so we collected a lot of money, and so we are this year somewhat fleshed and can offer the Post-Prom Committee $3,000 to help with their events. So Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Indeed, the mayor... The money is gonna go for a good cause, and it's my pleasure to present the Post-Prom Committee with this check for $3,000 on behalf of the mayor, city council, and the police department.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to take a quick moment to thank you, and for any of you who are not aware, this is our twenty-fourth year of having post-prom. Amy Nelson and I are brand-new to this job. Humorously, we don't even ever have kids who've gone to prom, nor do we have kids this year who are old enough to go to prom. By the time our kids get there, we will have this down. But it's a parent-run activity that's available to all of our junior and senior students, even if they don't go to prom, and the purpose is a chance for them to extend their night or have a night of fun in a really safe and substance-free environment. And so this year's activity is at Funway again, and they'll have access to all the indoor activities, including bowling, mini-golf, bumper cars, skating, arcade games. They'll have a casino, bingo, music, lots of food. We've had great donations of food and lots of fun raffle prizes, so the kids are really excited to go because all their friends are going, and we also sort of sweeten the pot with raffle prizes. And it's only possible for us to do this with the help of our community. We have been overwhelmed by the support of the individuals and businesses in Batavia, as well as the tri-cities and beyond, and we also are really grateful for the support of the city, because, again, without this, we wouldn't have a chance to offer this unforgettable and really safe, fun activity for our students. So thank you so much for supporting us, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, what time... Just so that everybody understands, what time does this start and when does it get over with?
It starts at 11:30, and it goes till 3 o'clock.
AM?
AM. And our police partners have been very kind about helping us make sure they're a little more lenient on curfew, because we have an expectation kids are going straight home, but they're also out, just helping make sure the parking lot is safe, the streets are safe for our students, and I'm proud to say we have not had a fatality in Batavia since we've been doing post-prom on prom night. So that's something that we're really, really proud of.
Thank you for all you do and all the members of your committee, because I think this is a nice opportunity and a nice event that Batavia puts on for its own young people, and I appreciate the good efforts that are put forth.
And we're always looking for volunteers the night of the event if you'd like to come out and see your students in action. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving to item number ten, which is a proclamation for Batavia Loyalty Day Parade on May 4th, 2014. Alderman Stark?
I do have that. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the community of Batavia is honored and blessed to once more host the annual Loyalty Day Parade, which has been sponsored by the Batavia Veterans of Foreign War Post 1197 and its ladies and men's auxiliaries for over two decades of civil life, and whereas this event serves to annually instill and reinforce the longstanding community commitment towards patriotism, volunteerism, and the vibrancy of the American spirit, and whereas the members of the Batavia VFW Post 1197 and its ladies and men's auxiliaries annually donated thousands of hours and thousands of dollars to plan, organize, and produce the Loyalty Day Parade, which has won the hearts and admiration of residents from throughout the greater Fox River Valley and beyond, and whereas the VFW Post Number 1197 has utilized the theme of the Loyalty Day Parade to promote a variety of community concerns and causes, including drug awareness, stranger danger, public safety, religious understanding, business development, public action, and American patriotism, and whereas the annual Loyalty Day Parade has become a civic highlight and has written for itself a proud chapter of Batavia history that serves to remind and enlighten all citizens as to the need to illustrate our love of freedom, support for our nation and its institutions, and commitment to the values which surround the American dream. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Schelke, mayor of the city of Batavia, Illinois, with approval by a vote of the city council, to hereby proclaim that Sunday, May 4th, 2014, shall be known throughout all of Batavia as Loyalty Day, and by the signing of this proclamation do hereby encourage all residents of our town to attend and participate in the festivities and significance of this most meaningful community event. I know, I supposed to say... I make a motion that we approve this proclamation as read.
I have a motion by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Sparks, for the approval of the VFW Loyalty Day Parade proclamation. Any discussion? I would just like to kind of reinforce what's just been said here. My hats are off to the Batavia VFW, because this has become a, not a multi-year, but a multi-decade, multi-generational event on their part, going way back a number of years now, and it really, I think, sets the tone for the patriotic movement in our community and really sends the message aloud and clearly to anyone who cares to acknowledge it, and hopefully most people do, of the pride and respect and great honor that Batavia takes and the men and women who so honorably serve our country in a variety of fronts in a very troubled world, and with the recent number of military actions that the United States of America has had to involve itself with, certainly the VFW, and has been there to honor the many from our own town and from surrounding area who have stepped forward and let many instances left their families because their unit was called up from a reserve status, and I just want to say that this really is something that is very meaningful in our community, and I would hope that on Sunday, May 4th, that everybody turns out and participates and at least watches this most valuable parade. Would you come forward? And you were the chairman, I believe.
I'm Andrew Frankham.
Right.
I'm the fortieth Loyalty Day Chairman.
Chairman, okay. I'd like to ask you if you'd like to make some comments.
I'd like to make a few comments. I'd like to say thank you to the city council, Mayor Schelke, and the city of Batavia for helping us put on our fortieth annual Loyalty Day Parade. This is my first year as parade chairman, and it's a very new experience for me. Lot of learning, a lot of stress, but I've had a lot of help from a lot of people, and I'd like to say thank you very much. I'd like to hope that we have good weather, not like a few years ago where we had some very bad thunderstorms and things like that. We had to cancel it, but I hope we have good weather, a good turnout, and a successful parade.
On behalf of the city council, I'd like to give you a copy...
Mr. Mayor, before you present that, we haven't taken the vote.
No, I'm sorry. Yes. Call the roll, please.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no, noes, none absent. All right, now I don't get ahead of myself. On behalf of the citizens of Batavia and the city government, I'd like to present to you a copy of the proclamation that was just passed, and again, thank you, and certainly we're here to continue to work with you as this event proceeds to unfold in the days ahead. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor Schelke.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a proclamation which I'm gonna ask the city council to approve, honoring the L.R. Johnson and son firm for their sixty-nine years of business presence in our community, and I think probably the best way to do this is let us read the proclamation, and then I'll have you vote on it, and then I'm very honored the Johnson family is behind me and they're here to accept it tonight, but I'd like to ask Alderman Stark if you... You don't have a copy?
But I can read it. Okay. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas for the past sixty-nine years, the community of Batavia has been the hometown to L.R. Johnson and son, which has earned a business reputation for honesty, integrity, and quality service that has spanned four generations of the Johnson family, and whereas this firm was founded in 1945 by Leonard "Lenny" R. Johnson, and for many years was a familiar civic presence from its location at 575 South River Street. Over the years, the firm's management saw the addition of Lenny's son Butch, his wife Veta, grandson Mel, and great-grandson Brandon. The four generations of the Johnson family have directed the business for nearly seven decades and have been known throughout the Fox Valley for their work in enhancing the economic growth of Batavia and the surrounding area, and whereas it is fondly remembered that on countless occasions, the L.R. Johnson firm stepped up and contributed numerous donated acts of kindness and public assistance in our town. These deeds of public support included such actions as clearing snow from the Fox River to provide ice skating activities, providing sand for playground and backyard sandboxes at no charge to citizens, and always ready to help members of our police, fire, or public works departments with specialized equipment during emergency situations, and whereas it is recognized that the firm enjoyed a community reputation for its willingness to respond quickly to the needs of residents and its overall supportive attitude of helping people that was a trademark of founder Lenny Johnson from the day he founded the firm. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Schelke, mayor of the city of Batavia, and members of the Batavia City Council, hereby approve and sign this proclamation of thanks and appreciation to the entire L.R. Johnson and son family for the record of civic service that illustrates what a positive and beneficial business attitude can accomplish. The city of Batavia officially extends to the entire L.R. Johnson family our sincere gratitude for the record of commitment and caring that you have showered upon our town. I move that we pass this proclamation as read.
Second.
Motion, Alderman Stark, and second by Alderman Sparks, for the approval of the proclamation. Call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no, noes, none absent. All right, now I don't get ahead of myself. On behalf of the citizens of Batavia and the city government, I'd like to present to you a copy of the proclamation that was just passed, and again, thank you, and certainly we're here to continue to work with you as this event proceeds to unfold in the days ahead. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor Schelke.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a proclamation which I'm gonna ask the city council to approve, honoring the L.R. Johnson and son firm for their sixty-nine years of business presence in our community, and I think probably the best way to do this is let us read the proclamation, and then I'll have you vote on it, and then I'm very honored the Johnson family is behind me and they're here to accept it tonight, but I'd like to ask Alderman Stark if you... You don't have a copy?
But I can read it. Okay. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas for the past sixty-nine years, the community of Batavia has been the hometown to L.R. Johnson and son, which has earned a business reputation for honesty, integrity, and quality service that has spanned four generations of the Johnson family, and whereas this firm was founded in 1945 by Leonard "Lenny" R. Johnson, and for many years was a familiar civic presence from its location at 575 South River Street. Over the years, the firm's management saw the addition of Lenny's son Butch, his wife Veta, grandson Mel, and great-grandson Brandon. The four generations of the Johnson family have directed the business for nearly seven decades and have been known throughout the Fox Valley for their work in enhancing the economic growth of Batavia and the surrounding area, and whereas it is fondly remembered that on countless occasions, the L.R. Johnson firm stepped up and contributed numerous donated acts of kindness and public assistance in our town. These deeds of public support included such actions as clearing snow from the Fox River to provide ice skating activities, providing sand for playground and backyard sandboxes at no charge to citizens, and always ready to help members of our police, fire, or public works departments with specialized equipment during emergency situations, and whereas it is recognized that the firm enjoyed a community reputation for its willingness to respond
(applause) Okay, moving then to item number fourteen on the agenda, which is ordinance fourteen dash nineteen, amending the zoning code regarding administrative design review. Alderman Brown, do you have this?
Thank you, Your Honor. This was brought up at the J-Cow. It had been at the Plan Commission for a public hearing prior going to J-Cow. Kind of a little bit of history on this. It stems back to when the Holy Cross Church was thinking about doing a, a improvement on their property. It kind of came to our attention at that time that maybe we should look at the whole process for the administrative design review. So after the first of the year, staff took a look at this and took it on to J-Cow for a little bit of an informal, then went on to the Plan Commission, and then after the Plan Commission public hearings, went back to the J-Cow with the recommendations that came out of staff and out of Plan Commission. I was not at that meeting, but I'm fully aware of what it says, and at the J-Cow, apparently it was a vote of six to four, with six in favor of recommendation, four against. The four against, basically, from what I understand, were just happy with the process the way it was. The six in favor of it were in favor of it mostly because it felt, they felt like it, it kind of helped out the businesses and, and expedited the process. So the recommendation here is for approval of ordinance fourteen dash nineteen, there's three conditions on it, basically that, or four, that administrative design review be allowed by up to fifty thousand square feet, that the project does not exceed twenty percent of the area of the existing building, that it is not revealed on a street-facing building elevation drawing, and that it's no closer than one hundred feet to the property line. And this would give the staff the authority to administer, or administrate the design review without the applicant having to go all the way through the whole Plan Commission and, and J-Cow and so on and so forth before they can get their approval to improve their property. So I would move for approval of ordinance fourteen dash nineteen.
Second. Move, Alderman Brown, second, Alderman Vasiliyan, for the approval of ordinance fourteen dash nineteen. Any discussion? Court call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
No.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
No.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Guys, I gotta have you come up here and stand facing me, so I can see the camera here, so. I want to make a DVD of this, if you want. If you'd ra, all raise your right hands and repeat after me. I instate your name.
I am P. Gil.
Having been appointed
Having been appointed.
To the position of paid-on-call recruit
To the position of paid-on-call recruit.
With the Batavia Fire Department
With the Batavia Fire Department.
And the City of Batavia
And the City of Batavia.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Usallah, we swear
Usallah, we swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of paid-on-call recruit
Of the position of paid-on-call recruit.
With the Batavia Fire Department
With the Batavia Fire Department.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause) What you call a house cleaner. Okay, moving then to item number fourteen on the agenda, which is ordinance fourteen dash nineteen, amending the zoning code regarding administrative design review. Alderman Brown, do you have this?
Thank you, Your Honor. This was brought up at the J-Cow. It had been at the Plan Commission for a public hearing prior going to J-Cow. Kind of a little bit of history on this. It stems back to when the Holy Cross Church was thinking about doing a, a improvement on their property. It kind of came to our attention at that time that maybe we should look at the whole process for the administrative design review. So after the first of the year, staff took a look at this and took it on to J-Cow for a little bit of an informal, then went on to the Plan Commission, and then after the Plan Commission public hearings, went back to the J-Cow with the recommendations that came out of staff and out of Plan Commission. I was not at that meeting, but I'm fully aware of what it says, and at the J-Cow, apparently it was a vote of six to four, with six in favor of recommendation, four against. The four against, basically, from what I understand, were just happy with the process the way it was. The six in favor of it were in favor of it mostly because it felt, they felt like it, it kind of helped out the businesses and, and expedited the process. So the recommendation here is for approval of ordinance fourteen dash nineteen, there's three conditions on it, basically that, or four, that administrative design review be allowed by up to fifty thousand square feet, that the project does not exceed twenty percent of the area of the existing building, that it is not revealed on a street-facing building elevation drawing, and that it's no closer than one hundred feet to the property line. And this would give the staff the authority to administer, or administrate the design review without the applicant having to go all the way through the whole Plan Commission and, and J-Cow and so on and so forth before they can get their approval to improve their property. So I would move for approval of ordinance fourteen dash nineteen.
Second. Move, Alderman Brown, second, Alderman Vasiliyan, for the approval of ordinance fourteen dash nineteen. Any discussion? Court call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
No.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
No.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
No.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
No.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Motion to approve fourteen yes, no no's, none absent. Guys, I gotta have you come up here and stand facing me, so I can see the camera here, so. I want to make a DVD of this, if you want. If you'd ra, all raise your right hands and repeat after me. I instate your name.
I am P. Gil.
Having been appointed
Having been appointed.
To the position of paid-on-call recruit
To the position of paid-on-call recruit.
With the Batavia Fire Department
With the Batavia Fire Department.
And the City of Batavia
And the City of Batavia.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Usallah, we swear
Usallah, we swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of paid-on-call recruit
Of the position of paid-on-call recruit.
With the Batavia Fire Department
With the Batavia Fire Department.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause) What you call a house cleaner. Okay, moving then to item number fourteen on the agenda, which is ordinance fourteen dash nineteen, amending the zoning code regarding administrative design review. Alderman Brown, do you have this?
Thank you, Your Honor. This was brought up at the J-Cow. It had been at the Plan Commission for a public hearing prior going to J-Cow. Kind of a little bit of history on this. It stems back to when the Holy Cross Church was thinking about doing a, a improvement on their property. It kind of came to our attention at that time that maybe we should look at the whole process for the administrative design review. So after the first of the year, staff took a look at this and took it on to J-Cow for a little bit of an informal, then went on to the Plan Commission, and then after the Plan Commission public hearings, went back to the J-Cow with the recommendations that came out of staff and out of Plan Commission. I was not at that meeting, but I'm fully aware of what it says, and that the J-Cow, apparently, it was a vote of six to four, with six in favor of recommendation, four against. The four against, basically, from what I understand, were just happy with the process the way it was. The six in favor of it were in favor of it mostly because it felt, they felt like it, it kind of helped out the businesses and, and expedited the process. So the recommendation here is for approval of ordinance fourteen dash nineteen, there's three conditions on it, basically that, or four, that administrative design review be allowed by up to fifty thousand square feet, that the project does not exceed twenty percent of the area of the existing building, that it is not revealed on a street-facing building elevation drawing, and that it's no closer than one hundred feet to the property line. And this would give the staff the authority to administer, or administrate the design review without the applicant having to go all the way through the whole Plan Commission and, and J-Cow and so on and so forth before they can get their approval to improve their property. So I would move for approval of ordinance fourteen dash nineteen.
Second. Move, Alderman Brown, second, Alderman Vasiliyan, for the approval of ordinance fourteen dash nineteen. Any discussion? Court call the roll.
Second.
Move by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Sparks for the approval of ordinance fourteen dash twenty-three. Any discussion?
Just to note, what this is doing is it's raising our tax from a half a percent, which is already there, to one percent. It's not a one percent increase. And it also, my, it's also, it's also got a, the wording changes for the sunset. There's an effective sunset date as of, we are prepared tonight.
I thought maybe I could clarify.
Government service.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Peggy.
My screen went down.
This ordinance was, a prior ordinance was already approved at the last city council meeting, but after review at the Department of Revenue, they recommended a few minor wording changes. So this ord- Oh, Siri doesn't know what's going on. How appropriate. So they recommended a few wording changes, and that's what this ordinance does, is just a few minor wording changes. There's nothing that's changing as far as the percentage increase from the last ordinance that the city council approved to this one. So it's really just a technical clarification for the Department of Revenue. And as Karen said, it's increasing our home real sales tax from a half a percent to one percent. And there is a sunset clause of three years.
In our ordinance, but-
In our ordinance, right.
The Department of Revenue will not and cannot impose that. We have to make sure we do that.
Correct.
Correct.
One thing that we have to remember.
And now that I found it again, I think it's important that we do point out that the tax is not applicable to the sale of food for human consumption, that it is not where it's to be consumed off premises where it is sold. And prescription and non-prescription medicines, drugs, medical appliances, and insulin, urine testing supplies, syringes and needles used by diabetics are also exempt from this tax. And cars. I move that we pass ordinance fourteen twenty-three as amended.
Second. Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman-
We already moved it.
That's right, we did. Karen, second, I remember that now.
Okay, any other discussion?
Thank you.
Kirk call the roll.
Stark.
Hi.
Chansett.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Sparks.
Could you repeat that?
No.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Callahan.
No.
Homan.
No.
Sam.
No.
Vassillion.
Hi.
Serone.
Hi.
McFadden.
Hi.
Brown. Clark. ATAC.
Hi.
That one is approved, eleven yes, three no. Okay, moving to item number sixteen, which is approval of waiver of formal bidding for purchase of equipment for one international model seventy-four hundred four-by-six twelve-yard dump truck. Alderman Wolf, do you have this?
Yes, Your Honor, I do. I have the next four. This is just waiving formal bidding on the dump truck. This is the first of two. So I'll make the motion that we approve the waiver of formal bidding on the purchase of one international model seventy-four hundred four-by-six twelve-yard dump truck.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien to waive formal bidding on the dump truck. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Hi.
Sparks.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Callahan. Homan.
Hi.
Sam.
Hi.
Vassillion.
Hi.
Serone.
Hi.
McFadden.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Clark.
Hi.
ATAC.
Hi.
Stark.
Hi.
Chansett.
Hi.
Motion's approved, fourteen yes, no-nos, and an absent. Okay, moving then to item seventeen, which is resolution fourteen dash forty dash R, authorizing to purchase one international seventy-four hundred four-by-six twelve-yard dump truck from Rush Truck Center for a total of a hundred and forty thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars. Alderman Wolf.
I would make the motion that we approve resolution four dash fourteen dash forty dash R.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien to waive, or for the approval of the dump truck. Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Hi.
Sparks.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Callahan.
Hi.
Homan.
Hi.
Sam.
Hi.
Vassillion.
Hi.
Serone.
Hi.
McFadden.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Clark. ATAC.
Hi.
Stark.
Hi.
Chansett.
Hi.
Motion's approved, fourteen yes, no-nos, none absent. Okay, moving to item number eighteen, which is approval of waiver of formal bidding for purchase of equipment of one international model seventy-four hundred dump truck. Alderman Wolf, do you have this one?
This is for the little dump truck of the two. This would be waiving formal bidding on the second truck. So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien to waive formal bidding on the smaller dump truck. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Hi.
Sparks.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Callahan.
Hi.
Homan.
Hi.
Sam.
Hi.
Vassillion.
Hi.
Serone.
Hi.
McFadden.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Clark. ATAC.
Hi.
Stark.
Hi.
Chansett.
Hi.
Motion's approved, fourteen yes, no-nos, none absent. Okay, moving then to item number nineteen, which is resolution fourteen dash forty-one dash R, authorize, authorization to purchase one international seventy-four hundred four-by-two seven-yard dump truck from Rush Truck Center for a total of a hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and seven dollars. Alderman Wolf.
Thank you, Your Honor. Make the motion that we approve resolution fourteen dash forty-one dash R.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of resolution fourteen dash forty-one dash R, approval of the purchase of the smaller dump truck. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Hi.
Sparks.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Callahan.
Hi.
Homan.
Hi.
Sam.
Hi.
Vassillion.
Hi.
Serone.
Hi.
McFadden.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Clark. ATAC.
Hi.
Stark.
Hi.
Chansett.
Hi.
Resolution fourteen dash forty-one dash R is approved, fourteen yes, no-nos, none absent. Moving to item number twenty, which is resolution fourteen dash forty-six dash R, authorizing application for a Kane County two thousand and fourteen Riverboat Fund grant. Who's got this one? Alderman Wolf?
This is one that we discussed at the last J-Cow meeting. This is to do with a resolution for the application of a Riverboat Fund grant to use for signage in the city, and it would be to match a grant, or match budget money that we have to use for a sign study, and then also change it around to use, it's been modified since then, to use some of the grant money for actual implementation of the signage program. So we don't spend all the money on deciding where to put them or what to put up, but also on the actual signs. So I'm glad to see that. And I would recommend we approve resolution fourteen dash forty-six dash R.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of resolution fourteen dash forty-six dash R for the authorization for the application for the two thousand and fourteen Riverboat Fund grant from Kane County. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Hi.
Sparks.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Callahan. Homan.
Hi.
Sam.
Hi.
Vassillion.
Hi.
Serone.
Hi.
McFadden.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Clark.
Hi.
ATAC.
Hi.
Stark.
Hi.
Chansett.
Resolution fourteen dash forty-six dash R is approved, fourteen yes, no-nos, none absent. Moving to item twenty-one, which is approval of safe routes to school involving Rotola Middle School, Alice Gustafson School, and HC Storm. Discussion of bid results and funding. Alderman Wolf, do you have this one?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. As of this point, we have not, staff has not heard back from state yet on the additional money we were seeking. So at this point, we're gonna just approve it as is. If we do get anything back, it will reduce the amount that we have to put up for the difference on it. If anybody has any questions on that, Karen is here if we do want to hear from her. Does anybody have any questions? Make the motion. Wow. It's a fun night, yeah. That we approved the safe routes to school for Rotola Middle School, Gustafson, and HC Storm.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of the Safe Routes to School program as presented. Any discussion? Alderman O'Brien.
I just wanna say, you know, we missed, the staff missed the budget. The engineer missed the budget, or the number by whatever amount it was, fifty thousand dollars, whatever it was. But just over the course of time, this is really the first time that the city of Batavia is paying for these sidewalks, first route to school. I thought staff was really done, and all the other previous engineer estimates have done a remarkable job to implement this, this program. So I just wanted to make note of that.
And out of the total that we have here, three hundred and eight thousand of it is from grant.
Another discussion? Kirk call the roll on the motion for the approval of the Safe Routes to School program.
Wolf.
Hi.
Sparks.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Callahan. Homan.
Hi.
Sam.
Hi.
Vassillion.
Hi.
Serone.
Hi.
McFadden.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Clark.
ATAC.
Hi.
Stark.
Hi.
Chansett.
Hi.
Motion's approved, fourteen yes, no-nos, none absent. Moving to item twenty-two, the administrator's report. Mr. McGrath.
Thanks, Mayor. Very briefly, staff were working on some concepts with some, for some downtown projects by potential developers. They're really in the very initial stages. When we get some, something more positive or definite to discuss, we will be bringing it forward to TIF. There will be, I'm certain there'll be at least a request for some TIF involvement, so we will be bringing that to J-Cow when it's appropriate. Some of these may take months to get to the point where they can be discussed. But we are working on several interested people. You may notice some barricades that are along the new retaining walls on Wilson Street. We have not accepted those walls yet, and already we had a little damage that we think was due from a skateboard, actually at one of the places that was designed to deter skateboards. So we had the barricades put up, and Noel's meeting with the contractor, I think on a Wednesday, regarding installation of some deterrents, and that will come to J-Cow when we see what happens with that meeting. It's also discussing the completion, now that the weather's good, the completion of the Storehenge project that was begun by volunteer work, and we're going to come to J-Cow and suggest that maybe we need to take that from the volunteers and just have a contractor come in and finish that project off. Engineering is still working on the multi-year street projects. As you know, we received some, notified that we received some generous IDOT grant funds, which require us to plan many years in advance. So engineering is still working on those plans. And lastly, particularly for Alderman Callahan, we did, I did send a communication to the Park District inviting them to join in the sign planning exercise, whether or not we get that grant. So that's all I have.
Any questions to the administrators evening?
The snowflake sign banner's coming down soon.
Yes.
We definitely wanna be done with winter.
Yes.
And then do we have scheduled also the landscaping for Wilson Street? Tree planting and-
I don't know if the, I don't know if it's scheduled, but I just talked to Noel about it last week, and that is actually part of the contractor's job. I just can't tell you. I'll send a memo around, get an idea of the actual timing, but hopefully it's soon. Will the crosswalks be going in soon? The flashing crosswalks, those?
No, the crosswalks on-
On the asphalt. My understanding is that there's been an issue, and I think the memo was sent out, there's been an issue with the quality of the asphalt topping that was done in some of those areas. So they're having, I believe, our stage-three engineers coming in to examine that, and we have to get that resolved with them and the contractor before we can put in the crosswalks.
The sixty-four dollar question I've heard around town the last few days is, is people are asking me, do we know yet if the decision, or contract's been awarded to take down the Swanson Hardware Building yet?
I wouldn't know. I think our agreement, which was signed, or effective March fourteenth, says that we're to count on receiving, I think subdivision, or proposed subdivision plating and things by the fourteenth of April. So I don't think we've heard anything.
I know they're having a, some kind of a supportive rummage sale over there on this coming weekend for hospice, I believe it is maybe, that they're doing a benefit thing for that. But then, I think a lot of people think that after that, we're gonna see bulldozers here pretty quick. So I didn't know if that was, if we had heard anything.
I know I would've heard something if somebody'd come in even discussing demolition permit. There, I believe though they were awarded demolition permit some time ago. It was contingent, I believe it was contingent on a design being approved for the actual building. So I think they may have to go through design review first. We've asked them to meet with us and work out a joint calendar of events, but I think there, I think at this point, actually, their main goal was to secure a lease with Walgreens.
So we don't know when that's, it's gonna, they're gonna start implementing construction.
Just don't know, Mo.
They secure a lease.
You'd've thought, after all the discussions we've had, and all the arguments we've had on this, that that would've been done prior to all the fighting and everything, but, you know. I mean, this will be next year, six months from now, I mean ballpark.
I, I don't know. We're just ready, we're ready to cooperate.
I brought it up specifically so we could get the word out, city's ready to go here.
Absolutely.
So I didn't want anybody to think that we-
We're holding it up.
I, I think that it turns out that, I think the Walgreens Corporation is like any big corporation, and I think there are, even though there may be a basic agreement on terms, I still think there are probably a multitude of levels that it has to go through to get, it's probably like working with IDOT sometimes, you know, just levels and levels and levels. But we're all ready to go.
Alderman Brown?
Yeah, just Bill, one comment, and maybe it's kinda directed to you and Gary both, but I know it's a multifaceted thing here. With the Memorial Day proclamation tonight and Veterans Day coming up, if we could just kinda make sure that the war memorials that we have, you know, part of it is the Streetscape project that's going on, that we expended a lot of money up there on that corner by that war memorial to dress that area up, and if we could just make sure the contractor's aware, and we try to concentrate specifically on that area to get it all spruced up for that event, and the same with our other memorials, if we can make sure Public Works kinda pays a little special attention to that.
No problem. Kinda piggybacking on what you just said, you kinda took my thunder away.
Thunder stealer.
Right, thunder stealing. I've had also people ask me, you know, when can they look forward to the flowers being planted in all the new planters up and down Wilson Street? Do we have a date on that one?
The hanging planters or the planter planters?
Planters, the ones in the ground.
I, I don't know.
It's getting warmer.
It's the way I frost-
I'm just prioritizing city thinking here, and I'm thinking that we need to be thinking about-
I'm sure that Scott hangs and Noel, that's all they're thinking about. I'm sure Scott's already talked to the hanging flower people. Those come in at a, when, a certain period of growth. I'll get something to the council.
I mean, there's a great awakening and a grand rendition that many people are eagerly awaiting to see, so I'm kinda waiting for it too, so I can kinda play down some of the naysayers that keep shooting at me. So I think this would be good to get this program up and going, and we get the flowers planted in the planters.
Loyalty Day Parade coming, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of people in town. It'd be nice to have it done prior to that. The weather is now being cooperative, so it's just, maybe it's a goal we can, we can shoot for.
Priority. Joey, did you wanna turn in? You can work that out with the staff. I appreciate your sentiments, but I'm just trying to make sure we get the flowers going here. Seeds in the ground, or whatever.
Need something else? Any more thunder?
Have we beat Bill up enough here tonight?
Nope, he's beating me up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, going to committee reports. Community Development, Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. Meetings to announce. Tomorrow night's J-Cow meeting, the only thing CDC's got on there is discussion on future Streetscape and/or TIF, if there's even any discussion on that. Plan Commission is meeting Wednesday, seven-thirty, April eighth. On their agenda is, again, discussion, or the final discussion, I think, on the Kirk and Wind Energy Pass industrial project rezoning and reclassification. And some discussion on the Tanglewood Unit Five is also gonna be at the Plan Commission Wednesday night. Historic Preservation is gonna meet Monday, April fourteenth, at five-thirty, and I don't have anything on their agenda at this point. That's all I have.
Very good. Any questions? Public Utilities, Alderman Clark.
There is one item on the April fifteenth meeting about some electric surplus property, and that is all I see for the time being, so that's all I have to report.
City Services, Alderman Wolf.
Thank you, Your Honor. We do have parking lot discussion on J-Cow tomorrow night. And then next week, on the fifteenth, at J-Cow, we have firefighter testing contract and a new fire apparatus purchase, tentatively on the schedule. And also, to try to get it out there a little bit early, we will be starting brush collection in May, so I wanted to get that out so everybody remembers that and let everybody know. Don't start piling it up yet. Keep it wherever you wanna hide it, but don't put it out on the curb route. That's all. Thank you.
Administrative Services, Alderman Sparks.
Or Clark, Stark. On April eighth, tomorrow, we have the J-Cow, we'll be discussing the future of J-Cow. And then on the J-Cow meeting on April fifteenth, tentatively, there's the discussion of appointment of city officers, and that's all we have on the calendar for right now.
Any questions on any of that? Okay, moving to item twenty-four, other business? Do we have any other business from the council? Alderman-
Just as a reminder, four of us are gonna be missing from tomorrow's J-Cow meeting. It's the two thousand and fourteen drive down to Springfield. Batavia will be represented by Marty, Nick, Lucy, and myself. That's the strongest, largest contingent of people driving down to Springfield ever, is my understanding, and they have rewarded us with quite a few appointments. And they've also rewarded us with a state dinner at the Governor's Mansion tomorrow night. So we're looking forward to an opportunity to meet with some important people. If anyone has any questions that they would like forwarded on to our legislators, the DuPage Mayor's Conference will be joining us as well, so it'll be a great opportunity for us to do some networking with our legislators. So please forward questions to us.
Well, if you see the governor tomorrow, remind him about my vote in support of the LAAN.
We will be dining in his home, so.
And you can also remind him that, and he'll remind, and should remember, he and I have the same birthday. I mean, same, same everything, same year, same day, same everything.
Also maybe, yeah.
That's my claim to fame to the governor.
Tell him to be a little receptive tomorrow and associates.
Alderman Chansett, or Homan?
Your Honor, yeah. In the, we've heard of several good clauses tonight, of different things going on, and here's one more that I needed to get out. But Zono Salons, which is out at twenty sixteen West Wilson Street in Batavia, out here by the jewel, has teamed up with Chip and Batavia, an organization that is community helpers impacting people in need locally here. And they are putting together a prom dress drive for the girls at Batavia High School who are financially not able to buy their own. So they say you can drop off your gently-used dress anytime by April twentieth, and they'll make sure that it gets to someone in need. And they're also collecting donation, five-dollar donations from people to be able to help pay for tux rentals as well. Chip and is a pretty cool organization. There's actually over fifty kids in the Batavia public school system that are technically homeless. And Chip and has really kind of started this, this program to kinda help those kids out and try to rectify some of that, so definitely take time to support them if you can.
Very good, thank you for sharing that with us. Anybody else? Okay, going to the mayor's report. I just wanna share with you a couple of things that have happened in the last couple, few days here. Today, I've received two different, two different phone calls, both of them from the state of Pennsylvania. And both of them were people that are telling me that they are preparing to move to Batavia. And they had some question that they wanted to have asked. One of them was a history and one of them was a service question, and I don't know, they thought they'd call and see if they could get the mayor or something. Well, they got me, so I had the opportunity to talk. So I said to these, both of these folks, why is it you're moving to Batavia? What, what really, and the answer from quite honestly, both of them was, oh, the Batavia Public Schools. That I really liked the schools, and I really liked what I saw, I liked the facilities, I liked to go on the computer and look at the test scores and the educational record that's there. So that was kinda the anchor tenant that brought them in. Then I was, Sunday, I was at an affair, and I got asked by a lady who most of you would know, who was telling me that her husband's passed away, and she's very interested in selling her house and going to someplace else, but she was telling me that she and a bunch of her friends were wondering, you know, did I have any insights as to when the Moose Art Project was gonna start? And I said, well, unfortunately, I don't have any insights, but, and then she proceeded to tell me that she had been to a party in Aurora, and there was five or six people down that she was there with, who were all kinda sitting there waiting to see what this was gonna happen, when this was gonna happen, because they all think that's gonna be such a nice sight for kinda empty nester living to be taking place, and they're very excited about it, and they're kinda standing in line waiting at the door to move in. So, I mean, there does seem to be a lot of, you know, whether it's people that got kids in school or people who are empty nesters, they both seem to, now whether or not this buys for governments in the future some great conflict about those who don't wanna be taxed anymore for their schools versus those who wanna see more in the schools, that may be getting set up here, I don't know. But I will tell you that there seems to be a lot of people wanting to seemingly move into Batavia and get in here because of the, the school system. And the idea of specifically the older houses that surround our downtown, and I think we've heard this in some of the conversations we've had here recently at J-Cow with on our housing study, these are very attractive for younger couples to come in and buy an older house, and as several have pointed out to me, the older houses in Batavia, to a large degree, are not ramshackled. They initially were very well-built by probably, you know, Scandinavian carpenters, and, you know, their turn of the last century, and are houses that can be easily retrofitted and are upgraded, and the value returns, the neighborhoods have come back, or never left, I guess, but they're strong. And so there's, there's a lot of people seemingly wanting to get in here. to get in here. So I say that kind of on the background of what King Harris, who was the gentleman that was here speaking to you that night at the J-Cow, about how we had done so many things right, and we were one of the models, that he, he was citing to other people of places that are doing things good. That being said, I mean, we continue to have a lot of demand for, you know, enhanced services, and I think all the things that we're working on here seem to be setting that up. But, you know, another feature that I will tell you seems to be a kind of a major anchor is our commitment to the downtown, that people like the idea that the city government is investing in the downtown, we're spending money, we're doing stuff that kind of tricks it out, put, you know, I was half joking when I talked about the flowers, but I mean, I think that's going to be a real razzle-dazzle that'll catch a lot of fancy and a lot of appreciation on the parts of a lot of people. And, you know, we've, I've had several people, I was down in Blue Island recently, and somebody down there was telling me about how they've gotten into the fact, they said they can't get here every week, but they come at least twice a month on Saturday mornings to River Street in the summertime, because they just love the River Street Farmer's Market that we have on, in downtown Batavia, and they're down there telling their friends about it. So, you know, I think we're doing some stuff right here. Well, needless to say, we have a lot of internal conversations among ourselves about concerns and ideas and things we don't like or like, but on the same token, there seems to be a lot of positive spin here. And I go to Chicago to a lot of different meetings on a regional perspective with a lot of other mayors in the regions, and I generally walk out of those meetings kind of thanking my lucky stars that I have the city council that I do, and yeah, we don't always agree as we've seen by the votes tonight, but in the same token, we seem to be able to at least get by it all and get some things done, and that doesn't seem to be the case in a lot of other cities. And the other thing I'm thankful of is that we seem to have at least our finances, and I credit our staff to this, lined up so that we're not sitting here saying, gee whiz, we're $750,000 in debt, and the hole is sinking further and further, and you don't have to go very far where you can, there are cities in our own county that are in that problem right now. So there's a lot of positive things happening here, and I just want to keep speaking on a positive note about things that are happening, because Batavia, I think, has a lot to be thankful for, and a lot of good things going for us. And, you know, the downtown has kind of gone through the rough ages, but I think the streetscape program, at the end of the day, those of us who, you know, threw our political capital on the floor and let people step on it and shoot at it, at the end of the day, it's going to look like it was a pretty smart thing to do, the things we've done. So I just wanted to let everybody know that you go out and start having people come in, like Mr. Harris the other night, and say nice things about you, you kind of get the impression, well, you know, we've had a rough spot, points here, but at the end of the day, we've done some stuff that really has made a positive difference here, and people are beginning to notice it. And so I just wanted to thank each and every one of you for your positive thoughts and continue, let's continue to have our discussions and our debates, but in the same token, it's good that we are doing all these creative things that I think at the end of the day will, you know, make us shine pretty brightly in the specter of suburban Chicagoland as a place that is pretty neat, and we have a lot to be thankful for. That being said, I wanted to also share with you that Chief Dyke gave me a copy of his annual report for 2013, and if you add up the number of calls that the Batavia Fire Department on both the fire and ambulance side responded to last year by the number of days in the year, the Batavia Fire Department last year, throughout the year, averaged 9.6 calls a day. So that's, that's a lot of activity for a fire department of our size. And a lot of that is on the ambulance side. I mean, we get, but many times the fire crews have to go along, back up the ambulance, and many times, as I think the report indicated, there's been multiple times when our two ambulances that we have stationed in town get busy, and then we have to bring in either Geneva or North Aurora, but we always have a paramedic engine probably available in town that can go in and kind of take care of things until we can get an ambulance there. So, you know, that being said, I think we, we should be thankful for the, the good work that the fire department has to put on here on a day-to-day basis when you're starting to recall the, the call volumes. Just to give you an example, as many of you know, I was on that department for many years back, I was 40, I was thinking today, I joined 42 years ago, and at that point in time, the old chief we had used to say, well, we're getting busy here, guys, we're about to start averaging one call a day, and now we're up to 9.6 calls a day. That being said, I also want to give a pat on the back to our friends at the police department, because they continue to do some stuff that, you know, that when you're in the police business, you have a tendency to make people not happy but mad, but on the same token, we seem to have some ability here in the Batavia Police Department to do some stuff which has been, you know, very, very appreciative. And a lady called me last week and told me that her beloved dog got out of the house, and she was going to be mortified if she lost this dog, and lo and behold, a Batavia police officer who she didn't know apparently came down the street and saw this dog looking somewhat forlorn, and so he stopped his squad car, and he opened his door, and the dog ran over and jumped in the backseat of the squad, and they brought the dog down here to the police department, and she called up and they said, well, we've got the, your dog, we've got a dog like that that just came in, and she ran down here, and it was her dog. And she couldn't say enough for the quality of service that she got and how it was providence that this Batavia police officer with this animal instinct and this kind heart was on, I think it was South Jefferson Street, and opened the door and rescued her dog, and because that dog could have never, could have disappeared, she never saw the dog again, and she would have been heartbroken, but the Batavia Police came to the aid of her on that occasion. So, again, the small things you do many times are what really, you know, win your friends in, in favors, and I think, you know, to the credit of the Batavia Police Department, we're still a small enough agency in spirit and in activity that we will do stuff like that. I think many other police departments will see that dog and just keep right on driving by, but we stopped and picked the little pup up and rescued him. So I'm, I'm just wanting to share stories as the mayor that you get from your constituents as you wander around town. And then today, the classic of all, I ran into some gentleman who I don't, he seemed to know me, and of course, that's fame and my time I get here, but I walked in the door at Sam's Club, and he says to me, are you still the mayor? And I said, yeah, and he says, well, I lived here 10 years ago, and I just moved back. And I said, you did? He says, yeah, he says, I made a big mistake. I moved up to Lake Geneva, Wisconsin, and, you know, that sounds like it's a great place to live, and they advertise about what the great tax rates are, but there's a trick in that bag too. But anyway, he says, what I really like about Batavia, you get up to Lake Geneva, Wisconsin, then they place to shop, all they got souvenir shops. You got real places to shop here, and so I told my wife, as I got older, I needed a place where I could shop, so I'm moving back to Batavia. So he's back from Lake Geneva, Wisconsin. So, you know, you hear about him fleeing, but we, I met one today, and then he says to me, is Alderman Brown still on the city council? So I think he's one of yours, I don't know who he is, but he's, he's looking for you to tell you he's back from Lake Geneva.
It's a good bad cross.
Well, I just got a, Jewel and I got an email, I think it was last Thursday or Friday, from one of our constituents, that along with your story about Mooseheart and people wanting to know about that type of housing, there was a resident that lives out in Windmere that sent us an email wanting to know if there was any more activity on the landmark property, because that type of housing was something he was looking to get into. So we responded back to him and what we knew about it, but, but there's obviously a pumped-up demand for that type of housing in Batavia, so...
Well, I, you know, I ask people, why it is, you know, what is it about this that makes that attractive, like the people that talk to me about Mooseheart, and they said, you know, you go down there and Mooseheart will say, well, let's go to Moose Haven down in Florida, and they said, I don't want to move to Moose Haven in Florida. My children and my grandchildren are in Midwest, and I want to stay in the Midwest, you know, yeah, if weather gets bad in January and February, I can go someplace else, but I really like the spirit of the town and what's happening around here, so why can't you give me some housing with a first-floor master bedroom and bath and modern conveniences, and I'm going to be one happy camper? So, I mean, that stuff's there, and I think it's a, and as I'm hearing today from two different calls from Pennsylvania about people who are moving here because they like the school system, and so it's, it's stuff that's out there, and I just think it's good that every now and then for us to sit here for a few minutes and talk about what the instincts of this town is really all about.
One more good thing too, as long as we're kind of talking about the good things, Bill got an email yesterday along with myself, I think Mike was on it, there's a couple different awards that Batavia's received, we've had some conversation about it regarding River Street, and there's a particular individual that's affiliated with this firm that's received these awards, and I, he's, we've been trying to get him to come down here, and his busy schedule is prohibited, but it sounds like he's going to make time and going to come down here and talk about these awards that have been given and received and such for the type of street we did on River Street. Very positive.
All right, I'm done with the, oh, one other thing I do want to mention, the Batavia Fireworks Committee, of which Alderman Callahan and Alderman Stark are members on, are members of, I got asked to remind us all that on May 2nd and 3rd is going to be the fireworks ground, fireworks fund garage sale, citywide garage sale, Friday and Saturday, May 2nd and 3rd, the days before the Loyalty Day Parade. And we are now accepting applications, and if you got to get it in here by the 26th of April, because that's the magic date, that anybody comes in after, you don't get on the map. And as part of this garage sale, they publish a map of Batavia, and they put on the map exactly where all the garage sales are with a little star or something, and so to be a participant in the garage, and all the money that's paid goes directly to the fireworks committee for buying fireworks, and it's $30 to be a participant in the garage sale. But you get on the map, and we do some other thing, we advertise it, and it's, you get a lot of people in there, and so it's $30, and you can submit your application down here at City Hall, the girls will accept them at the receptionist's desk, and then we'll get you on the map, but you got to get it in here by the 26th of April to be able to make the map.
Or on our website.
Right, that's what I was just going to say, on our new website at bataviafireworks.org. It's been redesigned by Red 27 Designs, a local company, and it looks phenomenal. Looks phenomenal.
But for those who don't have computers, or, you know, I just thought, well, I'll shoot this over TV, trying to spin the fireworks a little bit, because, you know, we're getting ready to have the big show. This, I don't know if we know for sure yet if we're going to have total utilization of Anxstrom Park, because the Park District's going to have that baby under reconstruction this summer. So we may have to move all the folks that sent it Anxstrom Park out into the street or someplace over on Batavia High School. Now, the school's telling us that they're not going to do anything construction-wise, so most of the school property should be available for people, for us all to go out there and sit and watch, but the, and I think it's, maybe parts of Anxstrom Park, maybe a little bit will be available, but they're going to put some fencing around it, as I understand it, and there'll be a big chunk of it will not be able to be utilized this year, because they're putting in a new pavilion and some parking and a bunch of other stuff out there, and that's all going to be under construction on the 4th of July. And so, the other thing I was going to share with you is that our new community band is going to have a couple of presentations. One's going to be at the Loyalty Day Parade, and they're of the mind and the age that they don't think they can walk the entire length. So what they're going to do is, they're going to encamp themselves down at River and Wilson in the city parking lot, and so they're going to play songs to kind of accentuate the floats or the groups that are in the parade, as long as there's no band there. If there's a band there, they'll shut down and admire the band marching, but if it's the military in a tank or something, they're going to play some kind of military song and whatever, but they're going to do a little ongoing parade concert at the corner of River and Wilson during the Loyalty Day Parade, so they'll be there set up and doing that. And then on 4th of July, they're going to be part of the early evening entertainment out there, and John Heath, who's the band director, will not be able to be there that evening, he's got something else he's doing, so the son of our former police chief, Victor Anderson, Denny's son, who is the band director down at Yorkville High School, is returning home that night, and he's going to be the conductor for the, the community band on the 4th of July. So that's kind of the big band news, if you will, and so I just wanted to share that with you too. So that's all kind of good stuff, and hopefully we can talk some positive things here as they move forward this year, because there's a lot of positive things to talk about. Bill, did we have an executive session on the electric utility? What? Okay. All right, then I'd entertain a motion for item number 26, which is an executive session for the purposes of discussing the purchase and sale of electric power.
So moved.
Motion and second? Do I have a second? Motion. Okay, have a motion and a second. Kirk, call the roll for the executive session.
Stark?
Hi.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?